It is Monday, November 24, 2025. This is the regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education. It is 6:00 PM. Trustee Noble, can you please take attendance?
I'm here, but Paul Coleman.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 2 of the agenda, this is general discussion. Item A is Board of Education Intern Program Update. I don't think our interns... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see if... Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's working. Okay. My name is Zina Jendali. For those of you who don't know me, I'm one of the board interns. Usually Sofia Tomina would be joining me, but unfortunately, she's not feeling good today. To briefly recap our project that we want to implement this school year, our goal is to implement networking skills into the district's K-12 system. And so while networking is an essential skill for future academic and career success, it's also not really valued at this age and level. It's more something you deal with in college. So to address this gap, we hope to develop a district-wide networking program with activities tailored to each age group. And since our last meeting, which is where we finalized our idea, we've been brainstorming specific ideas for each grade level. So at the elementary level, we are considering activities that focus on teamwork and collaboration, so more partner-based activities, and even something called a mini presentation day, where students share a hobby or an interest that they want with their class. And it's just kind of to promote, like getting yourself out there and what it means to be a public speaker and a leader, just more simplified, obviously, since they're younger. And so our next step to implement this would be connecting with the elementary schools to explore how these activities can be implemented into the curriculum. Moving up to the middle school, we're proposing a career research project, where students research a career path of their choice. And as a part of the project, they'd be required to interview someone who is working that job to kind of cultivate those, like, networking skills, interviewing skills, like asking questions. And that interview with a professional in that field would be a requirement for that project, so we can implement those actual skills. And then moving forward, it would just kind of be about, like emailing middle school teachers, middle school principals, to try to discuss potential implementation. And then finally, at the high school level, we hope to organize career conversations. But with these career conversations, we want them to be with our Bloomfield Hills alumni. So kind of structured as like a Q&amp;A panel. And so this can help students discover pathways and gain insight into what it's actually like to be a part of that career. Lots of the information we gain as high schoolers on, like, what it's like to be a doctor, like, oh, you need med school requirements. It's very surface level. So if we have those interactions, either via Zoom or face-to-face at an actual panel, we can kind of see what's it really like, like what are the benefits, what are the drawbacks? And students can genuinely consider what they want to do in the future. So before our next board meeting, we hope to begin contacting alumni to try to set up a time or kind of like an outline of when this could potentially be. And overall, this past month has been lots of brainstorming about what we actually want to implement. And now moving forward, we really hope to make this happen by taking more action. Are there any questions, concerns, feedback? I'd love to hear.
Only do you need any help from us? Is there anything we can do to guide you? Because I think it's a great idea. It's something that hopefully, like I mentioned last time, is not just a one-time thing. I think this is really good, especially when you get to the high school level and you're talking about doing a lot of the mock interviews or shadowing, those kinds of things, especially now with people that are in the workforce, with AI changing things, like how is this affecting you? How does that change your mindset that when you're going to college, do you pivot to different directions? Like, so I'm hopeful that it's something we sustain, but whatever you need from us to connect you in the right places, I guess.
Yeah. I think a little bit of like, I think something that's holding, like, everyone on the council back is like, what are our limits? And what are, like, what do we have the authority to do as students? We would love to, like, be sending emails and, you know, taking lots of action, but I think it gets a little bit intimidating because, you know, at the end of the day, we're just students. I have been contacting, like, the advisors to the council, I think her name, Katie Tedeschi and Addie Sherman, about like, what are the right steps to be taking? But I think getting more clarity from that, from like actual board members would be really beneficial.
I think, so I know that they were very active in reaching out, and I don't think, I mean, Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any reason you couldn't connect with people, especially if it's, you know, administrators or whoever it may be in the buildings. I don't think, especially if, you know, if we're included on the emails, or, you know, we've got the right people to help you get connected, I don't think there'll be any issues with that. I know they had to work with a lot of, I know in the music program, they were talking to the people in charge of that and understanding what are they currently doing, so that they weren't doing duplicative work and things like that. So as far as limits, I don't think you have any. And you're not just students. You guys are usually the smartest people in the room, so do what you gotta do, because it's a great idea. Don't hold back.
Yeah. One of your action steps that you developed, as you mentioned, was your next steps. We'd certainly be happy to help coordinate whoever it is you need to get ahold of. For instance, you've mentioned elementary administration and integration into some curriculum or class. We can figure out what that means and who we might coordinate with.
Perfect. Thank you, Paul. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that I had a chance to also review the information I provided by Trustee Coleman back in October regarding this particular project or initiative. And I don't know if there's additional updates. I guess my question would be, where is the district's oversight as we are engaging with our children, right, in connecting them with alumni in any form? I would love to know what, how that's gonna, you know, pan out. Not to necessarily say that there aren't limits, but there are some limits in engagement and making sure we have processes in place and protocols in place to ensure that our students are knowing what, like, you're asking for protocols. We want to make sure you receive that proper information, so as you are engaging with the community, to build this amazing opportunity for us, for you and the rest of your, our students, that we know what the parameters are, as we want to make sure our kids are, our elementary kids, our high school, middle kids are definitely engaging in the right ways. And I don't think any of that is outlined in what we received from Trustee Coleman, which does give us the overview of the problem, the solution, and some of the action plans that you just, you know, kind of highlighted today. But I would also love to know, like, how we also ensure that we're doing some of the same protocols we've asked in the past for vetting and all those great things for engaging with our students. So just want to make sure we highlight those things.
Any other comments from any other trustees? Thank you very much. And I agree, don't ever say just the students. You're the smartest people in the room, for sure. You don't overcomplicate everything like some of us adults do. But thank you for your time. You did a great job presenting that. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 2B. This is the Bowers Farm and Johnson Nature Center Public Engagement Results Presentation. Superintendent West will get this teed up.
Yes. Thank you, President Hill. As many of the community and much of the reason people are probably here tonight, this is a presentation based on the directive that I was given earlier in the fall or late summer to seek community input into what a potential partnership would be with Oakland County Parks regarding the Bowers Farm and the Johnson Nature Center. As such, we conducted an exhaustive process in the month of October, where we collected much feedback from the community in both survey form and community engagement events. Those were both attended well, pretty good attendance there, and we got tremendous feedback. And Oakland County Parks has joined us tonight to go through that deck, revealing the results of that survey. And that will lead us to the next part of the conversation, which is, okay, so what? Now what? And so I will turn it over to Oakland County Parks, who will present the data to the board, and then we can have discussion around that.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Simon Rivers. I'm a planner with Oakland County Parks, and I was the lead on public engagement for this process, for this potential agreement. I had the opportunity to engage with many Bloomfield Hills Schools' families, and we had our two open houses, one at Johnson Nature Center and the other at Bowers', and both were attended very well. And I'm really excited to dig into some of this data here to let you all know that folks are excited in this community about a potential partnership. So, and I should also say that we have our director here and our deputy director, Chris and Alan. We also have Ashley, one of our chiefs of nature education, who would be overseeing a potential partnership with the Johnson Nature Center. And this presentation was put together by our data analyst, Liz. So let's get started. So the purpose of our survey, as Superintendent Wes said, was to measure the support for a potential partnership between Oakland County Parks and Bloomfield Hills Schools, as well as to determine what the priorities are for the community, for both Bowers as well as Johnson Nature Center. And we also wanted to see how the, those two facilities are currently used and what residents and community members would like to see moving forward. So as we mentioned, the stakeholders were, of course, Bloomfield Hills Schools, Oakland County Parks, as well as current and potential visitors to both facilities. And we held our two engagement events. One, the first one, was a Saturday during Fall Fest at Bowers School Farm, and the other was a Monday evening at Johnson Nature Center. And the online survey, which was emailed out to the community members, as well as a postcard went out to folks who live within the school district. And that, the survey was open for about a month. So here's our, at a glance, we had about 750 participants, more than 600 online, as well as almost 100 in person at our two events. And the top numbers are, 61% of survey respondents were in favor of a potential partnership, with 25% additional percent needed more information to decide, and 14% were not in support. And so as you can see, the top priorities for participants were agricultural education, weekend events, natural areas and trails, as well as youth education opportunities. And the top activities included the farm store and kitchen, Fall Festival, field trips, and hiking. And so we had some differences based on the demographics, based on who was a parent and who was not a parent for those who were taking our survey. And so we will get into that just a little bit. So here's the demographics. 97% live within Oakland County. 32%, almost a third, lived within Bloomfield Township, with another 27% in Bloomfield Hills. And almost 70% lived within the Bloomfield Hills School District. So that was really important, that we wanted to make sure that we had an overwhelming majority of our survey respondents being the families and the community members that are in the Bloomfield Hills School District. 41% were the parent or guardian of a child currently enrolled in Bloomfield Hills Schools, and just over half have children under 19 years old, and the most common age range was 6 to 11. And you can see, this graphic here, the geography of our survey respondents. So representation, the age range, the 35 to 54 age range was overrepresented, and that was purposeful, because we knew that we wanted to market and solicit feedback from parents, from Bloomfield Hills Schools' parents. And so we have other age ranges that are, that were underrepresented in the survey. And we also, as you can see to the right of the screen there, that we had 69% of our respondents were women, and only 26% were men. And so we need to figure out a way, I guess, to, as we move forward, sort of balance that disparity there. And then the racial and ethnic demographics of the respondents were about, were about So once again, 51% were in favor. There were, there was an opportunity to leave some open feedback, and a part of that feedback were some qualifiers from respondents. Some folks said, yes, you know, but I'd like to learn more, I'm not sure, but I'm leaning yes. And so we included that in the 61% who were in favor, with 25% needing more information, which, as we move forward with a potential partnership, we are happy to continue our engagement. And 14% were opposed. As you can see in the pie chart there, that's a large majority. If it were an election, it'd pretty much be a landslide. So we're happy to see that there were so many who were in favor of a potential partnership. And then you can see in the bar chart there, the different geographies of folks who were in favor, who needed more information, and who were opposed. And you can see that while Bloomfield Township did have the highest number of residents who were opposed to this partnership, you can see that more than double were in favor of the partnership with another chunk needing more information. And so we find that to be very encouraging, that at first glance of a partnership, that even folks who are not, the lowest number of folks who were opposed doubled that were in favor. So now we're going to get into some results based on the two different facilities. So Bowers School Farm. So only about 13% of folks correctly guessed that Bowers School Farm sees 40,000 visitors annually. So a lot of folks greatly underestimated the number of visitors that Bowers gets every year. And then you can also see that 49% of participants visit Bowers School Farm more than once, but less than 10 times a year. So you have folks who are going, you know, about once a month. 17% visit more than once a month, so you have a pretty strong contingent of folks who frequent the Bowers School Farm pretty often, and then 5% have never visited. And question three is, are you actively supporting Bowers School Farm in any of the following ways? And 83% of survey respondents said that they are actively supporting Bowers School Farm, whether that's in purchasing a membership, having volunteered, you know, making monetary donations, and then there are other ways, purchasing items from the farm, attending the school or camp, and then a number of other ways that folks have been supportive of the farm. So if you have visited the farm, we asked, what did you do on your visit? And we had over half of respondents say that they have visited the farm, store, and kitchen while visiting, and 53%, more than half, have visited during Fall Festival, and just under half have attended the Winter Park. And so you can see up at the top, the top few most popular activities, farm store, farm festival, you know, weekend events and activities. And then you'll see at the bottom that, you know, renting space for birthday parties, and we have employees who, Bloomfield Hills Schools' employees who took the survey, which we're happy to see as well. Let me all move forward. Okay. So we also asked how important the Bowers School Farm's offerings are, and the, you can see from top to bottom, that agricultural education was one of the most important, one of the most important elements of Bowers School Farm. So animal experiences, you'll see 81% were, found that to be very important for Bowers School Farm to continue offering, as well as the educational experiences, grade K-5 field trips, summer camp and youth programs, as well as grades 6 through 12 environmental Which one of the following, how important to you are the following features and activities? This is another ratings question that we ask in our surveys, just to compare the amenities and features. And as you can see, healthy forest and natural areas was the top, the top feature. Again, agricultural education and those amenities also rated pretty high. And towards the bottom, you see some playground and play features, improved parking and traffic flow, and dedicated event space, while they were rated important, maybe not as important as some of the educational pieces. So this question, we worked with Karen and her team to put this survey together, and this was very important from Bloomfield Hills Schools to ask this question. And it's important for us as well, because we want to make sure that, that community members feel a sense of ownership, of course, to maintain ownership over the park. So we asked, how important is it to you that Bloomfield Hills Schools maintains ownership of Bowers School Farm? 58% said very important, with another 17% saying somewhat important. And so that's about three out of four survey respondents find it important to maintain And we had some open-ended questions as well, as I mentioned, and there are just a few that are highlighted here. Share your creative ideas for the future of Bowers School Farm, such as new amenities and activities. You know, there are expanding STEM programs, offering community gardening plots, you know, there's a call for certain playground structures and play activities, ropes course. So there's a lot of really interesting ideas and suggestions from the community. And then another, another open-ended question, where folks were able to, you know, ensure that their comments were heard, offering a lot of positive, a lot of positive feedback, including, you know, positive thoughts about the nature trails and outdoor access, farms and gardening, as well as educational experiences. So we'll keep moving forward to Johnson Nature Center. And so, once again, we asked how many, we asked survey respondents to approximate how many guests they think visit Johnson Nature Center every year, and only about a quarter guessed correctly that it's 10,000 visitors annually. And then we asked how often folks visit the Johnson Nature Center. 42% of participants visit the Johnson Nature Center more than once, but less than 10 times a year. And then you can see that 12% have never visited. So just to sort of compare, 5% of Bowers, of survey respondents had never visited Bowers, while 12% had never visited Johnson, so Johnson Nature Center. So we see a little bit of a, you know, more folks who are more familiar with Bowers. And about 50% of folks say that they're actively supporting Johnson Nature Center, including donating money, volunteering, fundraising events, and purchasing members, attending schools and classes, et cetera. Once again, we asked what folks did during their visit to Johnson Nature Center, and more than half, almost 60%, have used the no-cost access to trails and hiking. And there, of course, is a lot of great educational opportunities at a nature center. And folks have also visited the animals. And then you can see towards the bottom, again, that, you know, some dedicated rental spaces are maybe not as important as some of the more concrete educational opportunities for students. And we asked the question, how important are the following offerings at Johnson Nature Center? And the number one most important were the no-cost trails and hiking. And I should note that there were a few people who were there at the public engagement event who were using the trails. They were there to use the trails, and they saw that we were having an event, and they popped in and let us know how important the trails were and how important Johnson Nature Center was to them. And of course, K-12 educational opportunities, bird walks and pond studies as well, so. And how important to you are the natural, or excuse me, are the following features and activities? Healthy forest and natural areas, I mean, we see a bit of a pattern here, that's the most important feature for survey respondents, as well as quiet areas and scenic views, and then, you know, boardwalk repairs and improvements. And then lower on the list are the outdoor pavilion and nature play, as well as parking lot enhancement and visitor amenities. So once again, we asked, how important is it to you that Bloomfield Hills Schools maintains ownership of the Johnson Nature Center? And more than half say, yes, Bloomfield Hills Schools should remain the owner. And then another, about 18%, say that it is somewhat important. So again, more than 70% of respondents believe it is important for Bloomfield Hills Schools to maintain ownership of the two facilities, while being in support of a potential partnership with Oakland County Parks. So we asked for creative ideas for the future of Johnson Nature Center, and we got a lot of wonderful feedback about, you know, nature preservation, and of course, once again, that community education piece. So folks asked for more signage, interpretive signage, for, you know, longer hours, and just a number of suggestions that folks are really passionate about. And finally, the final open-ended question, we asked, you know, are there any other comments, questions, or suggestions? And once again, the overwhelming majority of folks gave positive suggestions and are love the features and amenities that are already at Johnson Nature Center and want to increase the, increase the amenities, increase the opportunities for educational, yeah, increase educational opportunities for students. And I believe that's it. So I'm happy to answer. Any questions? Yeah.
I just have to say that when the board set out to get this community feedback and asked for something like this, I never envisioned it would be this great, and so thorough, and so many different ways to break down the data. So thank you very much. This was a big effort, but I find it incredibly helpful and informative. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions or feedback?
General feedback. I attended both of the in-person events, met with the team from Oakland, met a lot of our community members, and talked about the nature center and the farm. Almost unanimously, as Simon was saying, everyone was in favor of continuing to explore the partnership and the great ideas, and a lot of turnout from a lot of families really interested in our tree school program at the nature center, and kind of talking about how important that is to that program. And then the educational programming on the farm side, and how kind of important that's been to them in the past. Again, almost unanimously in favor. There were a couple people who were concerned, I'm not sure why, that by adopting this partnership, we'd be opening up the nature center to people outside of Bloomfield. It's always been open to the public, so that was kind of a strange comment. But otherwise, I didn't hear anyone suggesting that this wasn't the path that they wanted to explore as a community. So it was excellent. It was very well done. Appreciated all the efforts from Oakland Parks. Thank you.
I did have one question, in terms of, I saw a lot of positive feedback. I went through the raw comments, kind of scrolled through that, it was good, but I obviously didn't have enough time to kind of put it together. It sounded like I could see what the, what people thought in terms of why this would be beneficial and exploring it. What was the top reason people said no? Was there a resounding reason why people were opposed to it?
Yeah. I mean, I think that any time that there's a partnership with another entity, there's a little bit of skepticism, especially when a potential partnership could look like, you know, a different entity operating the facility. So there is just a little bit, I think, a healthy amount of skepticism, just about, you know, why Oakland County Parks was interested in this, in pursuing a potential partnership. know, why Oakland County Parks was interested in this, in pursuing a potential partnership. And, you know, of course, we let them know that Oakland County Parks is interested in investing in areas where historically we have not invested. In our 50, 60-year history now, Oakland County Parks has, you know, mostly stayed at, to the northern end of the county. And so, you know, now with new leadership, Oakland County Parks is planning to invest, you know, give more folks a cut of the pie, if you will. A lot of folks were also asking us at the events what our plan was, and there was, again, that skepticism that, you know, we have an agenda, or like an ulterior motive, or like we have a plan already that we are going to impose on the community. And we just, you know, very gently let them know that the reason that we wanted to do this robust public engagement process is because we want to hear what the community wants, right? And so we don't want to plan for this community, we don't want to impose our priorities, we want to hear what the community's priorities are and to sort of implement them along the way.
Okay, so I guess it's fair to say, you didn't hear, or from the comments, it was less about concrete, specific reasons, maybe there were some, but it was more about, I need more information?
That's, that was, that was pretty much it. They wanted more information, they wanted to continue to be involved throughout the potential partnership agreement and in forming that agreement. And so, you know, as with all of our, all of, all of our community agreements and partnerships, we will continue to do that community engagement throughout the process. As, as the trustee mentioned, we, you know, there are a couple folks who said, you know, this shouldn't be open to the public, it should only be open to Bloomfield Hills Schools' residents. And of course, there's the reminder that the Johnson Nature Center and Bowers are open to the public already, so. Did you, please, yeah?
If I could just add to that, so, this is obviously not a scientifically accurate poll, it's a voluntary survey. And I would say, in looking at these surveys over the years, what's remarkable is how many people are invested in these two facilities. So I would say this is a good measurement of the people who care the most about these facilities. So, given how much people love these, these facilities and the assets they are in the community, I think it's remarkable that there's this much support, given that there's a change involved. And, you know, as we have more detail, you know, it's a vicious, you know, catch-22 situation. Do we work out all the details first so we have the answers for them? Or do we, you know, do this, this process where we're seeking input first? But I would say, just from my perspective, this was a very strong response of support, given how much people love the facilities and that there's a change involved.
Sure. Thank you.
Simon, would you mind just regaling over the infographic?
Oh, sure. Yep.
Michelle, do you want to add?
I just, I just wanted to just ask, like, are there things in, are there other parts that weren't necessarily captured in the survey that would be beneficial for us to know about or hear as relates to, maybe there are some, some things that may have come up in conversation or with the families that were there that we may, that may add value to, because there, you can't capture every question, right? But there may have been some other things. I know, Jason, from what you may be engaged with the families that were present, were there things that you sort of heard?
Yeah, so two things I heard actually afterwards. One was, and again, a lot of the commentary was on kind of educational programming in association with the county and how that would work. One person raised kind of the MSU extension relationship between Oakland County and MSU and how that would work with regard to the farm and nature center. And then the tree school, as I mentioned, was one of the other things that came up a lot, is kind of, how do we protect, enhance those kind of programs, what kind of things happen to them? But that was the general gist.
And I'd like to add that, especially at the Johnson Nature Center, several parents of students in the tree school showed up, and you could really see how passionate they all were in favor of the tree school. And that was really impressed upon us, you know, please don't get rid of the tree school. They just spoke glowingly of the program and of the director of the tree school. Yeah, and also I should mention the other programs at Bowers, FFA and 4H as well, those were, were really, I mean, I had one, one parent say that 4H saved her child's life. So, you know, these are, folks are very passionate, as Chris mentioned, about, about these two facilities. And, and so I think, yeah, those are, please, yeah.
One thing I might add, so, one of the other things that we did at the events was ask about what type of improvements people would like to see at the parks and so, or at these facilities, which could be more public recreation park oriented. And so, I don't know if you have any of that with you, Simon, just in terms of the people were looking for more trailways, you know, public restroom availability, I don't know, pavilions for family gatherings, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that were, I mean, we asked what folks' top priorities were in person, and they got to, you know, the prompt was, if you had $1,000 to spend at Bowers or at Johnson Nature Center, how would you spend it? And the top choices were pretty reflective of the survey. And so the trails, folks were really passionate about keeping the trails open, maintaining them, you know, as best as we could. And, yeah, so, I mean, restrooms are always going to be really popular as well. And then the nature educational opportunities, those were some of the top comments we received on sort of our priority board activity. And you can see the infographic here, this is specifically just the survey, but, again, at Johnson Nature Center, it's pretty much exactly what I, what I mentioned, the trails and hiking, youth education, you know, visiting rescue animals and, you know, which, again, is an educational opportunity, as well as maple sugaring, again, educational opportunity. So folks see that these facilities are both recreational but also educational, and they want to continue, continue that as well.
Any further comments?
So I'll just add, so I appreciate the partnership and, and the community outreach and input. Just reminding the board how we ended up here, this has been a year and a half, I think you just reflected, I inherited this conversation when I got here last year, and we picked it up, and it's gone through its own levels of, you know, motivation. And I will tell you, I was very impressed with the, the information we got, too. One thing I've been impressed with this community about is when you ask them a question, they'll provide the input and in a robust way. And I do genuinely appreciate that, and this was no exception. What I got out of the information, and again, I've had the privilege of seeing this a couple times now, as has a couple of our trustees through the strategic planning process or committee, what I hear is, you know, the community wants the properties preserved, they want to see enhancements, they want to see sustainability, ownership, education and access. Those are really the six words that jumped out at me as it's, as I reflect on the information that we have. And as I've been very transparent in this process and in the discussions I've had specifically with staff and students, the sustainability part is the part that concerns me, if we just maintain ownership and there's no partnership with it. It's, it takes significant financial resources to, to run these properties, and I would be concerned about the deferred maintenance that we would get into over a course of a number of years, should we not seek or take advantage of this partnership. So I think that this potentially lends itself to providing enhancement and sustainability at these properties. I was very pleased, I was, an open question to me is, how much does our community value the educational resource that these properties are? And that was answered. That was answered significantly, and I think there's a great appreciation of, of these properties as educational components. And in brief discussions with Oakland County Parks, there's a desire to enhance their educational programming as well, and really learn from some of the stuff that we, we have done there and Alan, through your work and leadership, has been able to, to do. And I, so there might be some synergies there. I do think that the 25% is indicative of, we didn't provide answers, we were seeking input. And there is a lot of unknown still, and with that skepticism and concern can arise. But I do think that this board has information enough now to suggest that our community is at least open to this possibility of, of a robust partnership and what that looks like. As such, we have drafted a resolution for consideration later this evening, in the event that this conversation goes positively and the board wants to entertain a resolution to move forward. And it would highlight some of the areas in which we heard through this presentation, such as maintaining ownership. It would give me directive to negotiate an agreement with the parameters that are outlined in what we heard from our community. So I also, I think I'd be remiss not to acknowledge our partners in this, too, the Preservation Bloomfield, Friends of the Bowers Farm, Friends of the Johnson Nature Center, the Historical Society. We've had tremendous amount of support throughout this discussion and a tremendous amount of interest. Our staff has provided great inputs and insight into what we should be looking for. So I do think, I, I understand and appreciate the skepticism and the unknown as it relates to, as it relates to a partnership, but I do think that there is great opportunities. And I would encourage this board to consider the resolution that's before you tonight in furthering this conversation, as I think there's great opportunities to, to deal with the things that the community asks for, the preservation, the ownership, the, the enhancement, sustainability of these, these tremendous educational resources that we have. So, again, if, if the partnership and the community engagement is any foreshadowing of what a partnership might look like, I think we're in good stead here. So I appreciate that, I appreciate all the work that went into this, and I appreciate the board's foresight to say, look, we need to hear from our community. And so the next step would be to entertain the resolution or some form or fashion of it. And we did run this through the Strategic Planning Committee, and it'll be further discussion as we move throughout the night. But I appreciate the efforts and look forward to further discussion and dialogue.
And the township.
And the, and the township, thank you. I'd be remiss, the township did respond tonight, and I believe they may, depending on the timing, may be here to read a letter that I provided each one, each of the trustees regarding their support of this. You know, they have their own strategic planning process going on, and I know that Parks and Rec has been a discussion within the township, and I've had some discussions, quite frankly, with Supervisor McCready, and I think there is some excitement from the township level of what this could mean, too, for the residents, not only our families that attend Bloomfield Hills Schools, but the larger community and the residents that live here. So with that, I'll stop speaking, and we'll continue the dialogue again through committee reports and through the discussions tonight.
Okay, moving on to our board committee reports.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, we're not having public comment yet.
In your report, there was no mention of ADA compliance, and I was surprised that there was no mention of that in the survey.
I'm sorry, we're not having public comment at this time right now, but thank you for, thank you for the question. And if you do have any additional questions, I would, we have your contact information, right? That can be publicized somewhere where people can reach out and ask further additional follow-up. I just want to make sure that we're being very fair to the community, that if anyone has specific feedback or questions they'd like to ask, everyone be given an equal opportunity to do so. All right, moving on to, thank you for your time tonight, we appreciate you coming and how robust and helpful this conversation has been, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, moving on to section C of the agenda, this is the board committee reports. We're going to start with the curriculum and instruction committee.
So we met on November 24th. I'm saying the date today. We met on November 11th. As is the case for most of these meetings that we have, we had a large part that we talked about and then some smaller parts. The large part was really talking about measuring student growth, which is, you know, we talked about that before, that it's difficult. What is growth and how do you define it? So we looked at setting, you know, what these targets would look like specifically for math as it relates to iReady, which is going to be a good tool for us to be able to use in that regard. So included in the output for our meeting, there are some slides in there, one of them has kind of what those baselines might be, and it's important to note, we're not looking for, it's hard to gauge where we should be right now. You know, we just introduced Bridges, number one, we're just introducing iReady. To be able to say what the number should be, I think would be setting an unrealistic target that we don't really know. We kind of know based on iReady where we think students should grow from where they start, so we're kind of using that. And obviously, as we go forward and see how students perform in iReady and how they continue to work in Bridges for the students that are in the elementary level, I think it'll give us a better idea for what that looks like. So, you know, know that this is, I don't want to say a test year, but it's sort of like figuring out what should the baseline be for some of these growth goals. We looked at the AP participation and progress, that's also linked in there, and there's some really phenomenal things that were, you know, you can see from the chart, it's all reflected in there in terms of, Michelle, you want to add something?
Can you give a quick, just really, really quick, on iReady?
Yep.
When will we see that report? Is that?
See what report?
The iReady data from this year.
We'll have three testing sessions that we'll do, so fall, winter and spring. And then what's linked in the report that Hark is referring to is our fall data for benchmark data. And then along with that, what iReady has given us for ELA and math for grades three through seven, I believe, which is in there, gives a prediction for if, if all of our students make a typical year, and then if all of our students make a growth or a stretch growth year, and then that data's in there. So it's still a little early to project all the way out till spring, so the winter data will probably confirm those numbers or, or, you know, the more we use iReady, the more reliable and predictable that those outcomes will be for us. So what you have here is the first of three for this year.
And then we'll, the comparative data from fall to winter, we'll, we'll get that around when? June?
I believe that is mixed in with state assessment. Yeah, we would probably have, well, definitely by June, because we would have been through that maybe a little bit earlier, but I don't have that in front of me.
And then what's the summer assessment? So I apologize if I misunderstood, what's the summer assessment?
There is not a summer assessment.
You said, you said fall, winter, spring. Sorry, spring. What's, when is the spring assessment?
Usually May. They're windows, so you have to see what that, but I believe that's May. School in summer.
Yeah. Right?
I'm just saying, we're not going to be in school during the summer.
That's what I was trying to understand, like, summer? Like, how is that assessment working? And so the comparison, I'm just trying to understand, so when you take the assessment in the fall and you take the assessment in the winter, the third assessment is telling us what?
How they accomplish on the grade level goals for that year. So it's the same, it's the same goal all the way through, same standard we're trying to get them to reach.
And then at each checkpoint, is there something that occurs? So we are assessing in, in the fall, we've seen some sort of progress or no progress in the winter, is there something that happens at that point with the student?
That data is used for our interventionists and our learning specialists decide if we need to do additional MTSS interventions, but also we can engage the students through the iReady platform in terms of individualized targeted practice in the areas that are the iReady platform in terms of individualized targeted practice in the areas that are needed. So that automatically happens in the system and it happens all the way through. And so if we have a student, let's say, who has shown, demonstrated that they are not achieving at the level, they will be given some independent work and that progress report also goes to teacher even between the two testing windows. So it's not like we only get that information at those times. Those kids can engage at different times with the, with the iReady system to give us feedback as to where they are and where their growth is.
And then we use the spring data to inform us for next fall? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
For, well, yes. So for May, like, and it also helps us identify if a student needs additional supports over the summer. And it also will set us up for any transition needs that we have between grade levels and between schools.
Thank you.
Yep.
New system. So I want to make sure I ask all the questions.
The iReady is for the fall and the winter and then in the spring is the M-step, right? Or do you take iReady as a?
Yeah. So the M-step is the state required assessment. But that does not give us the diagnostic that we are looking for. And also, that information generally does not come to us until August, September, sometimes even later, which is too late for us to implement where we want to kick off the year right at that spot. That's where iReady does a really nice job of filling in and being a little bit more standard specific. So we can see exactly what interventions that we need to do and areas that we can further expand them.
And then by the fall, or when we get the spring M-step, we'll be able to compare to the iReady spring. Because they're taking them around the same time to see how well it predicts.
How predicts. And then, so what iReady and the report that we have here, they are actually able to, given all of their experience, they can give us a pretty good indicator of where they think we're going to be. But obviously, we'll use that information next year to better evaluate exactly how predictive it is in terms of where we are. But the other nice thing is that data does come to us so quickly in May that we can, you know, start interventions if we need to do some summer supports, number one. Number two, but also when we start off in the fall, we have to test within the first 30 days. So that's going to come back very quickly for us to compare spring to fall as well. While we're still waiting for M-step.
Yeah.
So we're hoping to see, well, we're hoping to be able to engage quicker with our kids.
Yes. And in a much more specific way. Fastbridge gave us details, but they didn't give us to, you know, almost to a standard or almost to a skill level. I just would say, you're doing better in reading or you're not. I mean, it was a little bit more specific that, but not much. This is very targeted in terms of, you know, exactly where are the struggle areas? Is it sentences? Is it the ability to read? Is it the ability to spell? You know, I can't use all the fun terms right now, but very, it's very specific. That is the challenge behind the iReady is that the diagnostic is rather long. But once you have that information, it really propels us to, in our supports for students.
And then it provides something that you can give to them versus Fastbridge. It just said, here, you're deficient in this.
For a former classroom teacher, I think the most dynamic part for me is it will take your classroom and say, and you can say, I'm doing lessons today on writing, whatever it is. And it will automatically group your students for you. So you don't have to guess, like, if you're, whatever specific skill you're working on, it will automatically group your students for you. These are your high, they're your medium, you're low, or if you want to do homogeneous or heterogeneous grouping. And then it also will tell you if you are struggling with some students who are behind or below grade level, it will actually give you lessons if you want to use them. So, you know, as a third grade teacher, I didn't always know exactly what a first grade teacher taught. So I could do this much of my toolbox, but this gives me everything else to help expand what you can do for students on that tier one intervention within the classroom. So that's part of what I think is, it's beyond just the testing, but it's the ability for you to actually manage your classroom on a daily basis to get the most out of all of your students and your time in front of them.
An analogy that we've been using is like if the M-step is like having your pulse checked, the Fastbridge was like having your blood pressure checked. And this is really, iReady is like having your blood work done. So we get much more specific information back that we can use to really adjust instruction and intervention strategies around that. So, and in a timely manner too. The biggest challenge with state assessment data is we're not getting that back until kids are already gone late in the summer. So that's difficult for us to analyze and use that over the summer of moving into next fall.
And to be clear, I mean, we're talking about some of these things as they're, as if they're analogous, but they're like, it's not, you know, it's not diagnostic. iReady is not supposed to be, it's, this is, to me, the biggest part of it is, you know, supporting the educators in the classroom to work with the students in a more rapid way and in a more direct way, rather than saying, the student's doing well, let me just give them more work or harder work. And the student's not doing well, let me just give them more of the same. Let me, this is telling you, why is the student specifically, in a very detailed way, not reaching the objective that you think they should be? And how do you fix that gap? And for the student that is, you know, they are exceeding this, what else could they extrapolate from here to let, use that skill in a different way that would challenge them? So it's not a measure, you know, we're going to talk about AP, we're talking about other things, but they're not the same. And I would never look at iReady scores and say, we're doing great or we're doing poorly. I just would never look at it that way. And I don't want to give that narrative that that's how it's being interpreted. It's really, to me, a tool for the classroom in terms of gauging how well the students are achieving their growth goals.
Yeah. But I think, I think if it's not helping us in the long run, there has to be some sort of evaluation piece. So even if we're not evaluating whether or not the student is doing great, we need to evaluate whether or not the tool is what's best for the district. So there may not be a student to student, a student's individual evaluation, but it's definitely some sort of work has to be done to make sure we're still providing the best tool for our kids. But I want to say that to say that, thank you for that, Tark. And the other piece is, I'm really happy that as a, I'm not a teacher, but if I were a teacher, I don't have to figure out, and I think that, you know, what other resources I can help in my classroom to navigate that conversation with my, my young student or my student in general. So thank you for that. It's a great benefit in that.
And I think that, one of the things I appreciate the most is like, if I am doing an intervention on a student, the information they give us, that the lesson they give you is actually tied into the curriculum that you're doing instead of you saying, well, I think this is what we're looking at. It's very targeted and very, it's meant to be short and repetitive for the student to catch up. I mean, that's what we're really trying to do. We're trying to catch up and excel. And so I think it does that really nice piece because sometimes we don't recognize that it's just this one little piece that the student hasn't mastered yet that is preventing the movement of all of this. And if you can really narrow down to that, that piece, you can really help those students to accelerate.
And I only have one more question. So after we've gone through a cycle, when do we engage back with our educators to see how they, if this tool is, you know, great for them to also to use?
So we are able to do that in a couple of different ways. We do iReady training that we have done both for our interventionists and our classroom teachers well. They all got iReady training at the beginning of the year. And then again, on the November 4th, they got additional training. So we're getting feedback through that. Secondarily, we are able to see how often it's used as a, you know, the behind the scenes, how often is it used? Is it being utilized by teachers when and where? And can we support that in terms of utilizing it more or those types of areas? And then we, of course, will do a survey in May or however, gather feedback in May of how iReady is using and what additional training would be helpful for them to further the implementation of it.
Sorry, Paula. I didn't see you sitting back here.
I think my lights turned on. So I have one question, Tark. So ultimately, when we get to the superintendent evaluation, are we going to be in a position to have a measurable to evaluate the goal of growth?
So for this year, we're, again, this is really, we're unsure of where we should be. So this is really, we're using it based off our best guesses based on what we know is possible with iReady or what iReady says should be possible with students in general. But I think that's, the goal is, we've got to start somewhere. We're using that. I think it's going to be more beneficial the year after when we really know in general where we should be in terms of using the tool and.
I guess I'll ask you differently. So when, if it's 20%, I'm just saying, it's a percentage of how we evaluate the superintendent. What are we, I mean, I guess we need to start thinking about, what are we going to use?
Well, we've done it before, but I wouldn't know.
And it wasn't the greatest on how we did it. So I'm just saying, what, do we need to start strategizing on what we're going to do when it comes to growth to evaluate him or seek?
I think the fact that we're putting together a plan to do there, to do that and get there in successive years is important. We're saying, we don't have it right now. Well, we've got to start somewhere. We're starting with a new tool. I don't want to pick a random number and hope that it's good. So I'd rather say, let's use what iReady is giving us as kind of benchmarks to start with. We go through it, give the teachers a year to utilize it. And then in the subsequent years, we really can say, all right, what's a reasonable, like, what do we think is reasonable for growth in these specific areas? And start setting targets that might make more sense. But right now, I think it's, the goal is that we're getting to something that we're, we're setting up a platform that'll allow us to do that. Right now, we have, you know, I don't know how we did it last time. Do we just look at?
I mean, we looked at numbers.
But I don't know if it was, I mean, it didn't feel very reasonable.
All I'm saying is, we, from, from your committee, we just got to come out to the rest of the board of what are we going to measure? Not saying, I'm not saying this, and I get this will be two years, what is the measurable that we're going to evaluate him on? And whatever that is, I just think as a committee, you need to just think through as a committee what that measurable is and then report out. So at least when we're at that point, we're not just kind of, what are we measuring?
I think those conversations will naturally evolve around Superintendent Goal Three, which is measuring the student growth plan. There's a lot of work proposed. This is part of that conversation. There will be an update to that in December with the goal being fully, fully presented in March. So I think there will be discussions about how we will, how we will get there and what might be the appropriate method to use and data to use for that, for that part of the evaluation.
A year, I mean, two evaluations is probably not enough data to really determine if this is the best measure or not. So maybe next year, to your point.
All I'm saying is it's 20%. It's our job. It's very few things. I mean, that's our, it's our job to evaluate the superintendent. I'm just asking the committee that, to recommend to the rest of the board, what is going to be the measurable. It can't be nothing.
Well, I think we're doing it though. But we, I would argue before, I mean, if it wasn't relevant before and we sort of said, what are we doing? And we're putting a plan together now, I would say that in and of itself is enough. I'm not going to suggest what the numbers should be yet. I'm going to say the fact that we're putting together a plan, the fact that we do have a baseline that we're establishing for 25, 26, whether it's accurate enough for Bloomfield yet to be determined. But it's something, we go a year and then we know based on LST saying, hey, we think a growth percentage of X is reasonable. They can help work with us to kind of figure that out. And then we suggest that, here's the goal for superintendent to go forward with. I don't know, I think we're putting all that together. We've never done that before. We've waited until the end and said, how well did we do? And it sounds good, but this is a lot more. This is actually setting ourselves up to feel like we have some control over that. So I would say, I get your point. It's 20%, but a lot of this work, I would say, is that 20%. I don't, we're not going to have accurate numbers right now, but we're getting to that point where we can actually have that in the future. So that, to me, is enough to say if we can get to that point at the end of this, he's met his 20% growth goal in the sense of, we're getting to a point where we can do that. Because it was, it wasn't achievable before anyway.
If that's the recommendation of the committee, I just want a recommendation on how we're going to evaluate the 20%.
I think the measurable is not the growth target for this year's goal, right? It's a future year that might be the measurable. The measurable this year is the plan itself. And coming up with, you know, trying out a target, you know, a way to measure growth and seeing if that works. If that works, then next year, we will have something to use to actually have a growth target that would be something we would hold them accountable to.
I agree with you, both of you, right? So we have to have a plan and we have to have a target. But we don't really have any data to really determine what that target could be.
At this point, yeah.
You know, but I think there are other things, and I'm not.
We're just talking about that area right now.
That one specifically, sure.
Let's just focus there.
And I don't, I want to be cognizant, we're a 704. So I'm going to move on to AP data. I would want everybody to turn their attention there because for this current year, or not as of right now, but the most recent results, the mean score, 3.53, the highest, you know, in the last five years. Same thing for students with a three or more in terms of percentage wise, over 80%. Whereas, you know, look back at 2021, you're at 60%. And so, pretty striking differences there. As well, I'm not going to go through all of it, but the disaggregated data, very encouraging to see the different subgroups really performing not just a little bit better, but remarkably better. So the things that we've done in terms of opening up access for classes, those have made a big improvement in terms of these kids having a better chance at getting into these, just taking the test and trying, which is sometimes the hardest thing.
I won't ask any questions.
I'm trying to look at the rest of it. Am I missing anything else, Superintendent West or anybody else from the call out specifically? Because some of this other stuff I know is in like the finance group. So.
I'll save you our questions. I don't really have a major. So I'll just talk to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just more feedback than anything. And you can take it back to your committee. Or I can come to you next week. You could, you could.
Great news personally.
Yeah, I agree.
That 91% took the exam. Why don't we try for 100%? But hey, let's not go there, right? But I think this is really a huge improvement. If you look at the numbers and just trying is great.
Do we know why those 8% of kids didn't take it?
There's a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's financial. Sometimes they're in and over their heads and so they know they're not going to do well. Sometimes I, we have students who take five APs and they decide only test in four. But, you know, the financial one, we address it with the fact that the state has passed a funding mechanism to, for students that qualify for free reduced lunch, they waives the fee for them, reimburses the district. So we have, you know, we.
Awareness, more awareness.
Awareness, you know, but the challenge, and we've talked about this before, is that, especially for high school students who don't apply for free and reduced lunch, unless that is actually applied for and seen, then it.
Can't get it.
Then you can't get it. And with the free lunches that are out there, which is a wonderful program, and I'm not taking, I think it's amazing, it does create this, a little bit of a disconnect at the high school level for that. Oftentimes, it's, you know, they never had planned on it either.
Can we move on to strategic planning? And then if we have time, we'll come back to questions on CNI. Okay.
So we had our strategic planning meeting, November 12th. We talked at length, we received a presentation from Oakland during the meeting. We talked about that presentation. It was pretty much identical to what we saw today with a couple tweaks based on kind of our comments on what we thought would be useful to focus on at this meeting, which they integrated nicely. That was the majority of our discussion. We also talked a little bit about the strategic planning update, the process that continues with regard to the separate kind of committee talking with, through, and working through the various different issues underlying of the overall strategic planning project. In addition, we talked about, a little bit about updates with regard to discussions with our, with BHAECE union. It talked a little bit about early childhood financial analysis, all of which is reflected in the minutes that are provided. And then lastly, talked about this issue with regard to waiver of privilege with regard to the state's grant regarding mental health and school safety, which we don't actually need to deal with because apparently our courts, or at least maybe there's a settlement agreement or something that allowed us to kick that off for a little while longer. So afterwards, we received a resolution, I think we talked about with regard to this school farm and nature center. Trustee Southward and I didn't have an opportunity to kind of go through that or make a formal recommendation as a committee. I've looked at it separately. I hope everyone else has. I think it nicely encapsulates what we heard from our community and what I would expect to utilize going forward to authorize the superintendent to negotiate with the county. I think we should probably read it into the record so that everyone in the community knows exactly what we're talking about in terms of the resolution before we do any vote on it. Don't know if now's the time. I think it's probably better to do once we're in open session.
If we can just stand 31AA real quick. I did update all of you with the ruling that occurred Friday, I believe. And then the other court, it's filed in two different courts. The other court was expected to rule. What they ultimately did was create a schedule order of when they're going to hear the case and when they're.
and when they'll rule by. The strategy that I would like to, to execute now would be, and as I've mentioned, would be for us to opt in to, and approve the assurances by December 4th, as is required if we want access to the money. Then I'm going to ask that we follow the case through, and on December 15th, I'm going to prepare with attorneys a resolution that may need to be voted on. And I do want you to all consider whether or not you believe, given what you know, regarding the waiver of rights and the requirement of an independent investigation, whether or not you believe that we should accept the money. Should the court rule in favor of the state and say that these are legally permissible and stay? Or if they, if they say they're not, and they have to remove that language, or it's, you know, they violated our constitutional rights? So I'm working with an attorney on what that resolution may look like for your consideration on the 15th, because what's gonna happen? They're gonna rule, I believe both courts have suggested, by the 19th of December. The other option would be to come back together in a special meeting to either tell me to rescind that, or tell me, I still want, if we're gonna move forward and we're gonna ultimately revoke our waiver rights, I'm, I would like, for attorney-client, I would like the board to authorize that. And if we're going to rescind at that time, I think it's just as appropriate for you guys to direct that, that as well, that that's just a step too far, and we're not going to, we're not going to agree to that. So there will be a resolution prepared for that purpose for the 15th, or we, and we'll continue to follow it closely. President Hill and I can be in communications of how we'll handle that, and you'll, you'll get all the information. These legal opinions are flying off the shelf right now, and, and they're going back and forth, so I wanna make sure. I do think it's prudent, though, for us to, to sign the assurance right now, given the ability to rescind if the board so desires. So that's where we're at.
So just for background on it, the idea is the state's giving, I think, a $700,000 grant.
Yeah.
One of the contingencies for, for mental health funding and things like that, with the contingent on you waiving in advance, you have to provide, if there's a mass casualty, you need to, as a district, provide essentially, essentially open access for an investigation, fulsome investigation, and waive in advance the attorney-client privilege with regard to that investigation. Waiver of attorney-client privilege in advance is a constitutional issue. I don't know if you could actually do it. Who knows? They're asking us to do it. Frankly, if there's a mass casualty event in our district, I think it's gonna behoove all of us to be as open and honest and forthcoming as possible with regard to what went wrong. And I doubt we're gonna have a lot of legal discussions in advance, they're gonna be cloaked by attorney-client privilege in advance of that event. So I'm comfortable waiving it, both now and in the future. But again, it's asking us to waive one of the longest-standing protections in common law. Not just the United States, but in all common law countries. So it's a little bit of a overreach exercise by the government, but even so, it's $700,000 for a critical need, and we can cross that bridge.
Some experts out there have been saying that a mass casualty, as they are defining it in this language, is just like three people getting injured and having EMTs coming. So it could really be so broad that we, I don't know if I'm comfortable with waiving attorney-client privilege in the face of any kind of negligence that we might be sued for, or what have you, this school district might be liable for much more than we would have if we had that privilege.
Yeah, just, just having dealt with litigation and attorney-client privilege all the time, it's gonna come up if we have conversations with our attorneys in advance of the mass casualty event. I'm assuming we're not gonna be having in advance of something we don't know is ever going to happen, conversations with our attorneys about a future uncertainty. So what's the wave there? The issue would be after the mass casualty event, the investigation, talking to our attorneys about what our potential liability is. And at that point.
There's nothing we would hide.
There's, there's nothing we would hide. And we just, there's ways to conduct communications without creating a written record for people in litigation to gain access to. And I think our attorneys would be smart enough to avoid creating those kind of unnecessary records. So that, that's why I'm a little less concerned.
Well, it sounds like we'll have better guide for the conversation after that opinion that's supposed to come out in December.
Well, there's supposed to be a ruling.
Yeah.
The judge, we anticipate the judge will rule on whether, the constitutionality of the provision, so.
Yeah.
More to come.
All right. Anything more for strategic planning?
I think we're.
Anything more for strategic planning?
Nope.
Okay. Finance and operations, sorry, I took over.
Finance and operations, some bid packages will be coming tonight, vehicle purchase, bid package 18, Franklin building renovation, so we talked a little bit about that. But we spend most of the time focusing on the goal, which is a balanced budget. And then our budget right now, projections will be more fluid come January 2026, but when that comes out, in terms of what the numbers are, we looked at, as we will look at each month, we looked at two main things. We looked at Farm and Nature Center in terms of, you know, what that's looking at from a budget perspective. So now, and then down the road, if we, you know, end up directing our superintendent to go into a partnership, how that would affect the budget. And we also looked at the, looked at the early childhood care, in terms of what's that looking at from a budget perspective. So we looked at two things, we'll continually look at things, see where the budget is, and then ultimately, our committee, if we need to look at it from a balanced budget perspective, will make recommendations to look at it as an entire board, in terms of some of these things we're looking at. And then.
Like, is that, are we, I mean, I'm the only one that's.
No, no, that's fine. I've looked at it, our committee's looked at it. You're talking about the budget itself? What was, what was the question?
The goal is to be a balanced.
The goal is to be a balanced budget, yeah. Not necessarily, not this year?
What does that mean?
Balanced budget means that revenue.
I know what it means, but in this fiscal year, what does that mean for us?
In this fiscal year, well, this fiscal year, it's not part of the goal. The goal is for the next fiscal year to get to a balanced budget. So this fiscal year, in terms of where our budget is. So right now, I mean, Candace, you can comment, I know it's fluid, you know, right now, as of now.
For clarity, we have a balanced budget? Just, you know.
For purposes, we do have a balanced budget. We are utilizing part of our fund balance to close a gap between revenue and expenditures. So for clarity, I just want the public to understand that, we, we have adequate financial reserves. That said, the '25, '26 budget that the board adopted back in June did utilize $1.9 million of fund balance. And in the spring, prior to the adoption, we did some, we did prepare multi-year projections using certain assumptions. So those will remain fluid until we have more current information. We are in the process of putting together an amended budget for the current year, '25, '26, to really reassess our baseline going into '26, '27, and then working towards a goal of not utilizing fund balance to balance the budget for '26, '27.
So zero base budgeting.
So.
That's another term for it.
So utilizing, so essentially just revenue exceeding or equaling expenditures and not tapping into our rainy day fund. Is that?
Zero base budgeting.
So. 19, oh, 19, oh my goodness, 1.9. We're pulling that from our reserve to be at a zero base budget.
Yep.
But our projection right now for '26, '27, that will be adjusted, is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So right now, for our community, '26, '27, things don't change, we're still gonna have to use reserves. And our goal is to come up with recommendations to the board for '26, '27, what can we do so we don't use our reserves?
I just wanna make sure, I mean, I'm okay with what I'm saying, 'cause you do, you always find money.
I assume you're not.
Wait, no, not find money.
Find money. I'm about to clear that up.
Let me change my mind in what I just said. You always show us where we can make the appropriate.
She's on top of the financials, we'll leave it at that.
This doesn't find money.
Stop it. Look at, you know what I mean. Let me, I already made my corrections, can you edit that? No, I'm just kidding.
Any other questions besides, seeing if Candace can find more money?
Any other questions specifically on the one agenda item? One agenda items on the consent, we're buying vehicles. Any questions or comments on the Franklin building renovations? It's pretty straightforward, we're renovating the building to bring our operations administration back to Franklin. We've been renting a facility for post-COVID.
Three, four years.
Three or four years. We're moving those, we're renovating it. We have coordinated with the robotics program. They will continue to utilize Franklin for the remainder of this season and this year with a move over to the new space in the summer.
Do we know when that lease expires?
Yes, March 31st.
Of it, '26?
Yes.
Okay, so this is all, okay.
Yep. So that's, that's the basis for that recommendation. Okay, those are the major, I will tell you, President Hill, the, I mentioned this last time, but these committees, you can see, there's robust conversations, I think my staff, 'cause they put in a lot of work in preparation. But thank you to the board, too, for your attention to these conversations. I think, and I'm always open to feedback, but they are robust discussions, and the attention we're spending on specific topics are incredible, and we appreciate your attention to those matters and the preparation and how it flows into this meeting. I think it creates some efficiencies, and it's certainly some rich dialogue. I'm excited for tonight's closed session to talk about the goals and where we're headed and where we're going, but that, that doesn't happen in any small feat. Your attention and our staff's preparation for those meetings have been exceptionally good this year, and I appreciate everyone's work on that.
Thank you. I mean, it's 7:22, I'm sure everyone would like a quick break before the other us begin, so we will take a quick recess and then reconvene at 7:30. We are reconvening, now that it's 7:31, we are reconvening our regular meeting, the Board of Education, it began at 6:00 PM, today is Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, November 24th. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, we did take attendance previously, we'll note that trustee Colin is now with us for this portion of the meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, Special Recognition, this is the MHSAA Division 1 tennis state championship runner-up, and this will be presented by who tonight?
I guess, wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you for everybody that came tonight. Yeah, I'm acknowledging the tennis team for their state runner-up performance about four weeks ago in Midland.
When you read your name, come on up, and then we'll get the certificate, stay up here, and we'll get a picture afterward, okay?
Sounds good. All right, like I said, congratulations to you guys. The team obviously battled hard for that second place finish, a lot of tough teams out there, Troy kind of being the one that bested us, but really, over the past 10 years, it's been pretty, you know, something special that, you know, the guys, all the teams have done. Six state championships and three runner-up titles in that timeframe, and, which, you know, like I said, very special, it doesn't happen a whole lot. And especially in the last five years, two runner-ups and three state titles, '22, '23, and '24, you know, pretty unbelievable. Actually, unbelievable is, I don't know, I don't really like that word. It's, it's more believable, I would say. You know, hard work, dedication, perseverance, talent, discipline, all those things kind of, you know, add up, and, you know, I think it pays off in the end. And, you know, it has for these guys, and, you know, a lot of the other teams in the past, too. So congratulations to you guys, you guys did phenomenal. The following student athletes, they took home individual trophies. At three singles, we had Zev Spiegel.
Do you want some help?
At one doubles, we had Jonah Chernat and Krish Reddy.
Go ahead. You can go, continue on and on.
Oh, I said, do you want me to take some of them? Or no? All right, and then we had a two-doubles team, that was state runner-up, and that was Sajin Doshi and Meyer Saperstein.
The good ones?
Meyer Saperstein.
Meyer and.
Meyer and Sajin Doshi. Meyer's right there, and Sajin. All right, and then the other team members, Andrew Bickerstaff. Jonah Chernat was already there, Luca DiAngelo. And Clayton Yuman.
Yeah, we'll take a.
Okay.
Here, let's, the board will simply hang a, squeeze in here. Did Rick just, did Rick just set a sample?
Two layers.
Or you just dog with them.
Okay, look at me, and then I can hear his parents. Okay, parents, come on up. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you so much, thank you.
This is the hardest horse.
All right, congratulations to the team. All right, moving on. All right, moving on. Where's their coach or somebody? All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item Number 5, which is Public Comment. To submit public comment during a meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education, please complete a comment card and present it to the administrative professional recording minutes prior to the agenda item. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that boards may place limits on time allotment for the individual comment in addition to making a public comment. You may also email the board at any time at board@bloomfield.org. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection, will be excluded from public comment. Requests for public comment are assigned a number. When your number is called, please identify yourself once at the podium. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please also identify those who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the BHS Board of Education. And I suppose we should update the script with the, the other item I always add, that our public comment is three minutes and we do strictly adhere to that in order to comply with the Open Meetings Act. So if and when your comment is cut off at three minutes, please understand that's the reason for the rules, to make sure we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And trustee Fala will keep track of the time. All right, we have currently six public comments, and we will start with number one. As a reminder, number one, please come up and state your name.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Amber Moore. I'm here on behalf of the Bloomfield Hills Robotics, and I would just like to take a moment to say thank you to the board and to the superintendent for the continued support of the Bloomfield Hills Robotics Program. This program services hundreds of students throughout the district, and we are greatly appreciative of all that you put into the program. And we look forward to your continued partnership in years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Moore. Moving on to number two.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lynn. I am here today to comment on our Oakland County Parks Partnership. So I am the Bloomfield Hills High School Ag, Food, and Natural Resource teacher, and I have been for just over eight or so years, and I've worked at the farm for over 10. And I think in these conversations where we talk about partnership, I want to, from a teacher's perspective and from even like a, a science department perspective, just recognize the, the longstanding program that we've had at the farm. We've been teaching science at the farm since 1980. And with that, it's career and technical education as well. And so we, we operate an FFA chapter, which nationwide is the largest student organization for CTE, which has over a million members, right? So as we navigate what Oakland County Parks Partnership looks like, I just encourage you all to think about the current educational programs that we have at the farm that have existed through lots of transitions and iterations of the farm, and how valuable those programs are. And I know that as a Board of Education, you guys value the, the program that we have. But our classroom is not a standard classroom, right? So my, my room at the farm is, is four walls, right? And that's where the kids put their stuff, but then we're, we use 93 acres of the farm. And so, at any given time, my classroom is the student that's outside helping a sheep give birth, right? And they're looking at me going, what do I do next? And that's the lesson of the day. It's not always planned and it's not always, you know, a clean day, but it is probably some of the most valuable education we offer our students in our district. It's a moment for those students to take time, put their phones down, think about what's in front of them, become more empathetic. A global thinker when we think about food insecurities and how privileged we can often be in our own communities to not have to think about maybe where our food comes from. I, I just, I deeply value agricultural education, and a lot of the survey feedback was that the community also values agricultural education. So the educational priority was a big thing that was in this, you know, proposal, right? And so I just encourage all of you to think about what that agency looks like for us educators at the farm and how we're currently utilizing the site. You know, my school supplies are sheep and cattle and greenhouses and plants, right? It's not something that I could, you know, potentially pick up and move and do somewhere else. It's, it's valuable because of where it is and what it contains. So I know we do fantastic programming for K through 5, and all sorts of community programs as well. And I think it's just a moment to, I think, think about how you're empowering your teachers going forward too. I really, really hope that this partnership is in, is in benefit to us. And I mean, I know that the financial situation is a huge push for why we're doing this. And I look forward to positive growth. I look forward to this being something that benefits our students and our community members as well. But I, I think it's often missed sometimes that we do have, a lot of these big benefits are from those direct students that come to the farm, take these classes. And I just want to be sure that I voice that because it's my passion, right? And these students, I would, I would die on the hill that it's what's best for kids, right?
Ms. Lynn, that's, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Moving to number three.
Hello, my name is Emily Seifert. I'm a current senior that is attending Notre Dame Prep, and I've been a resident at Bloomfield Hills for eight years. I'm here to speak about the collaboration with Oakland County Parks over Bauer's School Farm and the Johnson Nature Center. I've been a part of the Bauer's Farm community since attending summer camp in second grade. I've been a 4H member there for eight years, and I am currently the club president. I've visited the Johnson Nature Center on various occasions through educational programs and have visited on my own time. Both of these places, especially Bauer's Farm, have been a part of my core educational experience. Through Bauer's Farm, I discovered my passion for poultry and animal science. Even without attending Bloomfield Hills Schools, I've still learned very valuable lessons on not just the field I want to, want to pursue animal science, but I've also learned very valuable life skills that can only be learned through experience. Bauer's Farm 4H Club has done more for me than can ever be explained. Through my club, I've found the value of friendship, hard work, and it's shaped me into the person I am today. If it hadn't have been for the leadership skills I learned through 4H, I wouldn't even be able to speak here today. Today, I'm here to ask you to keep these educational facilities as a part of Bloomfield Hills community. Bauer's and Johnson's have been providing educational resources for children for decades. This is not something that should be taken away. I firmly believe that children can learn so many things outside of the classroom at places such as Bauer's Farm and Johnson Nature Center. By taking these resources away, you're taking away experience for kids to learn actively. Under BON 2020, $200 million of taxpayer money was set to improve various educational facilities at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. BON was also supposed to fund improvements to Bauer's Farm and the Johnson Nature Center. So what happened? Where did that funding go? Why, instead of working to improve Bauer's Farm and Johnson Nature Center, its educational facilities, is the school district giving away control? I do not know the answer to these questions. Under BON 2020, the citizens of Bloomfield Hills trusted that the educational facilities would receive improvements to allow for a better future for the children of Bloomfield Hills and for generations to come, not for the elimination of hands-on facilities. Where did that money that was supposed to be used to help Bauer's Farm and Johnson Nature Center go? These two resources benefit all children from elementary to high school levels, but by giving them away to Oakland County Parks, you're taking away truly special educational resources for all children. Most highly densely populated areas like Bloomfield Hills don't have resources like Johnson Nature Center and Bauer's Farm. Don't take these places away that allow children to be curious, hands-on, and learn life skills. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say today. I hope you take what I have to say into consideration when discussing the partnership with Oakland County Parks. Thank you very much and have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Ms. Seifert. Number four.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Vanoyen. I come to you this evening as Vice President of the Board of Directors of Preservation Bloomfield. I have served on their board representing our school district since the inception of the separate 501(c)(3) Incorporated in 2008. The mission of Preservation Bloomfield, a unique and ongoing collaborative effort of the city of Bloomfield Hills, the township of Bloomfield, Bloomfield Hills Schools, and the Bloomfield Historical Society, is to preserve our heritage for the educational and societal enrichment of our community at large. We own and care for the Barton Farmhouse and the Craig Log Cabin, both of which we moved to the Bauer's School Farm. Our Preservation Bloomfield Board is heartily in favor of this partnership with Oakland County Parks to operate the Farm and Nature Center. We see it as a win-win for everyone. We look forward to collaborating with the team at the county to enhance our educational programming for Bloomfield Hills students and the rest of our community. Our Farm and Nature Center are two of the jewels of Bloomfield Hills Schools that bring hands-on learning experiences for our children. As a Bloomfield Hills School, School Board member for over 20 years, I felt a keen responsibility to serve as a steward for these special open spaces in our community. This agreement will preserve, protect, and enhance programming and community availability for many years. Please vote yes on the resolution before you this evening. I also want to make a comment on behalf of Dave Bogart, who's president of the Bloomfield Historical Society. He was supposed to be able to come this evening, and he's asked me to share their strong support of this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Vanoyen. Number five.
Good evening. My name is Kate Strumbus, and I'm here as a representative of the Friends of Farm. I have been involved with Friends of Farm on the board for about seven or eight years now. I, my daughter went to Bloomfield Hills Public School, or Birmingham Public Schools, I'm sorry, and we lived in Birmingham. Bauer's Farm was a thing I went by on I-75. I had no idea what it was until my friend, who was also on the board, asked me to join. I think it's a marvelous, I wish I'd known about it when she was growing up. It's a marvelous place. I believe strongly in agricultural education. I very much appreciate the teacher and the student talking about that. And I would just like to say that if it's expanded to the greater community, it's something that the whole community needs. It takes a village to preserve these things. So, and I'd never been to Johnson Nature Center before last year, and it's a fabulous place. So the resources that Bloomfield Hills has that not that many people, until more recently, probably the last five to six years with some of the programs that we've done at Bauer's Farm, I think has been phenomenal in terms of letting the rest of the public know that these resources exist in an area close to where many of us live. Not all of us can go further north, as Oakland County Parks was saying, to see some of these facilities. So it's a wonderful thing to preserve. So on behalf, though, of our, the committee and the board I'm on, I know that we have attended many of the public hearings that were held and talked to many of the people. Overwhelmingly, people support keeping Bloomfield Hills, the, the organization and the school and the Johnson Nature Center open. I call it the school. I don't, it's, it's an alternative education place, but it's certainly a wonderful place. They are strongly in favor of having this partnership move forward. We really believe that the Bloomfield Hills Schools are great at education, and that's what they should do, and that the Oakland County Parks are great at sustainability and maintenance, operation, and recreation. So there's not, these things can work together, is I think how we feel, and that everybody can work together and benefit from this. So I think that the partnership, and we all think the partnership would strengthen both sites without compromising any of the educational mission of the farm and the experiences that make the spaces so special. And it's an opportunity to ensure that the programs and our fam, that our families love from Winter Park to Fall Fest, continue on for new generations. That's certainly at Bauer's Farm. I know many of the programs at Johnson Nature Center are also beloved and.
Ms. Strumbus, I have to stop you. That's three minutes.
Grateful for what the district has already done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strumbus. Number six.
Hey, good evening, Board of Trustees and friends. My name is Martin Brook. I am here for two reasons. One, as a representative of my colleagues on the Board of Trustees, specifically Supervisor McCready, trustee, I'm sorry, Treasurer Showstack, and myself, Martin Brook, the Township Clerk. And I have a statement that the group of us signed and sent over to the board this afternoon. I'd like to read. And then secondly, I have a short comment on behalf of myself, and I'll do it within three minutes, or you'll cut me off, which I appreciate. I'm an attorney, so I can oftentimes talk too long. Dear Board, we are writing to express our full support for the proposed merger of the Johnson Nature Center and Bauer's School Farm with Oakland County Parks and Recreation. We recognize that the Farm and Nature Center play meaningful education roles within Bloomfield Hills School District. And while many surrounding communities divested in similar resources, the Bloomfield Hills School Board extended its commitment for the benefit of its students and the entire community. As a result, many generations of students and residents have had the opportunity for outdoor recreation and connection to our natural environment right here in Bloomfield Township. We applaud the Bloomfield Hills School Board and the school district for doing a commendable job at preserving these spaces. We respect the board's deliberative process and independent judgment regarding this important decision. From our perspective, we see many advantages to combining the Nature Center and Farm with the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Department. Two such advantages are that the Oakland County Parks and Rec brings additional expertise in the management of park resources beyond that of a school district or a township. Additionally, the Oakland County Parks and Recs has a dedicated county millage to invest in maintaining park resources. Making a decision to join forces will bring these additional resources to bear and will allow for the Farm and Nature Center to continue to play an important educational and community role for the long term. The opportunity for the Bloomfield Hills School District and the Oakland County Parks and Rec to join together is a rare opportunity that has never been available before and may never arise again. We would be, we would be pleased to see this collaboration move forward because we believe it would preserve the educational mission of the Farm and Nature Center and benefit all Bloomfield Township residents. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to offer our input. The letter was signed on my, by myself, Martin Brook, Township Clerk, Supervisor Mike McCready, and Treasurer Michael Showstack. Briefly, on my own behalf, I want to add a personal comment. As you know, I also serve on this, a school board, and now serve the community as, as a Township Clerk. It's an honor to do that. I want to thank you for everything you're doing as, as members of this board. And I would urge you to vote yes on this. Superintendent West and the board, I know we'll negotiate a, a deal that works for the school district and the students, but will also work well for the community in a long-term commitment. These are, as has been said before, and as you know, jewels of our community. I've worked hard in the past to maintain them within the township, but sometimes to be the same.
Justin Brook, I have to stop you.
But sometimes to be the same, you have to change.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Brook, for your comments. All right, if, did any other public comment come up? All right, that does conclude Section 5 of the agenda. Moving on to Section 6, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, a few updates for the community and the board tonight. The first thing I want to talk about is the strategic planning. We did hold our second working group meeting that consisted of data analysis, of a robust deck of data that the working group went through. We are planning for our December meeting, which is the same week as our board meeting, and excited about that. There are going to be community engagement opportunities between now and the next board meeting, so please look for those opportunities. And remember to visit bloomfield.org/plan for more information about this process. This will be a, a community engagement with community input. Our working group is working their conduits to our community, our staff, our students, and we will continue to work through that process. We are two, two meetings in right now. They've also had the opportunity to, our consultants that has had the opportunity to meet with all seven board members one-on-one, have robust discussions for you to give them, their, your perspective and your input. You'll continue to have that opportunity throughout. They've also visited many of our buildings and will continue to do that. I'm very excited for their next visit in December. It will consist of student panels, and they will get a second view from our students' perspective and input there. And I think we're just about ready to turn our focus on not looking at just who we are now, but really thinking about the future and what, what's possible. And I couldn't be more excited about that work. To address Oakland County Parks, as we have discussed tonight, the exploration of a potential partnership between Oakland County Parks and Bloomfield Hills Schools continues to progress with strong community engagement. That was, a comprehensive summary was presented to the board tonight by Oakland County Parks. We had a tremendous response to our surveys and our community engagement events that will help inform the board to ultimately make a decision whether we should continue these discussions and try to formalize a partnership or not. And we expect to have that discussion later on this evening through a recommended resolution. So that information will also be. So that information will also be available on our partnership webpage this week. Upcoming events, I know that we like these names. Music and Mingle will be at the Senior Center on December 10th at 10:00 a.m. Now, this is a wonderful event. The Senior Center, if you're able to join, our music programs from the high school are over there, and it is just wonderful to engage with the seniors, senior citizens in that way. And last year, I got to join that, and it was certainly a highlight throughout the year. So please, if you're able, make your way out to the Senior Center on December 10th at 10:00 a.m. Sinking Fund, thank you. Thank you to our community. We had the vote on November 5th, November 4th, and we were successful, 62.4% approval, and I am just grateful, as is our Board of Education grateful, for what I believe is a resource that will help sustain us in the areas of transportation, safety and security, technology, and infrastructure. That is a 10-year approval and should generate around $8 to $10 million per year based on our property tax assumptions. So thank you to our community. Thank you for listening. Thank you for voting, and ultimately, thank you for supporting that resource that will be a tremendous investment in our school district. So with that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. This week certainly gives us an opportunity to reflect on those things that we are thankful for, and as your superintendent, if I haven't said it and don't say it enough, I am thankful for this position. I'm thankful for working with the seven of you, who are very thoughtful in your governance and your care for our community and the future of our children. I'm very thankful for our staff, who work tirelessly on behalf of the about 5,000 students we serve, get the privilege of serving, and thank you to our community and the rest of our staff for your engagement. We, without doubt, I can say, and I like to say this at my community engagements, I get to be the chief ambassador of this school district, and what an easy job that really is, because we have so many great things going, from representing our, or celebrating our tennis team. I was able to go over to Battle Creek this weekend to watch our girls' volleyball team in the finals. I was able to see our play, which was just absolutely outstanding at the high school. Trustee Fala and I were able to get into three buildings, as well as trustee Baker, trustee Hill. We get to see the great things that are going on in our building, and I will certainly spend my three days off on Wednesday. We are all probably ready for a break, and I am no exception to that, but I will definitely be spending Wednesday through Friday, really reflecting on the things I'm thankful for. And this place and your support and your governance is one of those at the top of my list. So thank you. I hope you all have a wonderful break as well and get some time to rest and relax and rejuvenate with your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent West. That concludes Section Six of the agenda. Moving on to Seven, the Board's President's Report. First, I'd like to thank the community that turned out earlier this month to vote, and we thank the community for your support for the successful passage of the sinking fund millage, which replaces and extends the district's current sinking fund, authorizing the levy of 1.5 mills for a period of 10 years. So thank you for those who turned out to vote. It was definitely a light year at the voting polls, but appreciate those who did come out. Regarding our strategic planning process, this past week or so, Michelle, Lindsay, and I each had the opportunity to individually meet with Through Consulting. We were the final trustees to do so, so now that's, the one-on-ones with the consultants are complete. The next step in the process related to the board is that Through Consulting will be facilitating a board workshop at 5:30 p.m. on December 15th. Next, regarding the Oakland County Parks partnership discussion for Bowers Farm and the Johnson Nature Center, thank you to the community for what I think was really impressive participation in the stakeholder surveys or attending one of the engagement sessions last month. Oakland County Parks provided us with a robust data presentation at the beginning of tonight's meeting during the general discussion portion of the meeting. If you missed that and are interested in hearing that presentation and what the feedback showed us, these meetings are recorded and it will be available for viewing, if you'd like to see that. We will be having a closed session this evening to discuss progress on the superintendent goals as part of our year-long evaluation process. And finally, our next meeting is December 15th. Happy Thanksgiving and have a safe and happy holiday for everyone. I hope it's relaxing and enjoyable. And moving on to consent item, Agenda Item Eight, Consent Agenda, trustee Noble.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to Board, Section Nine, Board Business. Item A, Request to Approve Bid PAC 18 Franklin Renovations, Superintendent West.
Yes, so I would ask for approval of this Franklin renovations. Just for the public's record, Franklin Building is where we house our physical plant services, our operations department. We're currently running a building for our administration of our operations department. We would like to move them back into the building, and it currently shares space with our robotics program. It will continue to do that throughout this season, and we're prepared to do that, and logistics have been worked out for that. But this renovates that building, the front of that building, for office and conference room space for our operations department, and I recommend this be approved through the bond funding. It was also discussed in the general discussion earlier, as well as the Finance and Operations Department, or Committee, also vetted this earlier this month.
Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve Bid PAC 18 Franklin renovations in the amount of $549,036.42, inclusive of 10% contingency, to be paid from the bond fund as presented.
There's support? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to Board Business 9B, Request to Adopt Resolution to Authorize Superintendent to Proceed in Negotiations with Oakland County Parks. Superintendent West.
Yes, so we have prepared a resolution based on the anticipated discussion tonight for your consideration. It is a robust resolution, giving parameters for those negotiations of an eventual partnership, and I would recommend its approval. I would recommend it being read in its entirety for the community's notification and interest and that it be considered for approval.
Do you want to read it?
I move that the Board of Education, I'm sorry, I move the Board of Education to adopt the resolution authorizing the superintendent to proceed in negotiations with Oakland County Parks as presented.
All right. Do you want to read it in?
Sure. I'm happy to do so. So the resolution is as follows. Whereas Bloomfield Hills Schools owns and operates the Bowers School Farm and the Johnson Nature Center, two community assets that serve vital educational, environmental, and recreational purposes; and whereas the district has engaged in preliminary discussions with Oakland County Parks regarding a potential partnership intended to enhance public access, operational sustainability, and educational programming at these sites; and whereas the district, in collaboration with Oakland County Parks, conducted a comprehensive community engagement process in October 2025 that included both in-person events and an online survey, generating approximately 750 valid responses; and whereas respondents emphasized strong community values related to agricultural education, youth learning opportunities, preservation of natural spaces, and continued local ownership and stewardship by Bloomfield Hills Schools; and whereas the board recognizes that any future partnership must reflect the district's educational mission, maintain public trust, and preserve Bloomfield Hills Schools' ownership and oversight of both properties. Now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to continue discussions and enter into formal negotiations with Oakland County Parks regarding a potential partnership related to the Bowers School Farm and the Johnson Nature Center. Such negotiations shall be guided by the following principles derived from community input. Maintain Bloomfield Hills Schools' ownership and educational mission at both sites. Preserve and enhance opportunities for student and community education, agriculture, nature, and environmental stewardship. Ensure continued public access and preservation of natural areas and trails. Explore operational and financial collaboration that sustains programming and facilities without compromising community values. The superintendent shall return to the board with a proposed draft agreement or memorandum of understanding outlining the partnership's terms, fiscal impact, and operational implications for formal board consideration and approval before execution. And be it further resolved that the board expresses appreciation to the residents, parents, and stakeholders who participated in the engagement process and reaffirms its commitment to transparency, collaboration, and stewardship in the management of district assets that enrich student learning and community life. That is the resolution.
Thank you. So we had the motion support, and we've read it. Is there any further discussion? No, we talked about it at length. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead. Just to reiterate what we talked about during the study session, I did attend both of the community engagements with Superintendent West. I think this resolution accurately reflects, in addition to the survey, what our community is looking for. We heard, both in those engagement sessions and actually tonight, the importance of continued educational opportunities, the importance of things like FFA, Future Farmers of America, 4H at the farm, Tree School at the nature center, and I think this resolution kind of incorporates everything that we heard and all those important and really kind of critical factors that cause these two institutions to be jewels of our district.
I think we are with other things. I mean, I'll, like, when I first moved here, I didn't know about the farm and nature center. Then I found it out, and I said, oh, this is great, but then, you know, when you become aware of deeper, of how, you know, the obligation of managing it from a school district perspective and the finances and everything, and we've talked about all of that, and it's not just a recent thing, but I think we're at a spot where we have to, you know, make decisions about how do we continue to do the best things that we want to do. Obviously, this is important for the community. So looking at options, you know, there's, you got to fund things some way, right? And so just like with everything, whether it's funding it through a bond, or taxes, or the partnership, you have to do something to be able to continuously invest in these things that the community wants, and we know this is something the community wants. It's just making sure that we're doing it the right way, so that these priorities, such as what we've heard, which is education, which is having, you know, maintaining the green space element, the walkability, the public access, low cost, those kinds of things I think are all going to be important. And I think we're all at a spot where it's, we've gotten good feedback from the community. We know this is a good opportunity to explore, and I think there's a lot of eagerness to hear more, to make sure, you know, we saw in that chart, there's a lot of people that say yes, and then there's some people that still sound like, yes, but, or I'm skeptical. And I think that's the important part, is we're still going into exploring this and learning more. We still probably all have questions, too, about what this, you know, all the ins and outs of how this could potentially work. So I'm supportive of, you know, what we're doing is really authorizing the superintendent to have that and to continue those discussions to go further and look in that deeper. So I think it was wonderful to get the feedback from the community, to know that we're going in a direction that is going to position us to do the right things that everybody wants, and to find out, you know, what a plan potentially could look like. So I'm confident that, you know, this is a good step for us to continue that.
Yes, I do want to emphasize Section Three, which has been read, and you brought it up. This is simply authorizing, if voted on and passed, this is simply authorizing Superintendent West to come back to us with a proposed draft agreement. I think this is done in the right order, where I think there was a lot of discussion about what's possible here, and it felt like anything was possible, and before we started to get too granular with anything, it was very important that we got the specific community feedback. And now that we have that, I think we're better positioned to move forward. Any other comments from any other trustees?
My only comment is that several people have probably approached all of us about the uncertainty of what was happening moving forward, and I think we're trying to show our community that we're being as transparent as possible. We don't know what's to come, but we are trying to be as transparent as possible to show we are working with them, just like you all don't know what's happening, we don't know what's going to happen either. So, you know, I think that's the point of this, is to show that the community, that we're working in a transparent, open manner, and that we're excited to see what's next.
That's a great point. Thank you for adding that. Anything further? All right, we'll do a roll call vote on this. The last time we did a real roll call vote, I went in reverse.
You did.
So tonight, I want to be tricky and do last letter of your name.
First name or last name?
Last letter of your last name, and you were again going to go first, so I...
Yes, it's not right.
So I'm going just straight up alphabetical order. So we are going to vote trustee Abel.
Yes.
Trustee Baker.
Yes.
Trustee Fala.
Yes.
Trustee Hill, that's myself. I'm a yes. Trustee Colon.
Yes.
Trustee Noble.
Yes.
And trustee Southward.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right. Excited to see what is to come. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 10, Closed Session. A closed session per MCL 15.268, Section 8A. Superintendent West. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education convene a closed session in accordance with MCL 15.268, Section 8A, to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion or any further verbiage that we require?
Does the superintendent request that this be in a closed session?
I do.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote again. Trustee Baker.
Yes.
Trustee Southward.
Yes.
Trustee Fala.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Trustee Noble.
Trustee Colon.
Yes.
Trustee Abel.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We'll move into closed session, and we will adjourn from closed session.
I was okay with beginning.